Appropriately waiting as you have been waited upon when the Commission, when you're late, I would just ask that you wait for the mayor and Commissioner Mervin to arrive in order to have a full body for this meeting. I do believe that the mayor is intending to attend this meeting.
Yes ma'am, I appreciate that, thank you. I call this meeting to order.
Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes ma'am.
I would suggest that the Commission relieve the ex-city attorney from her responsibilities for being here for the rest of this evening.
Okay.
We have an injunction that we received as of Friday, court injunction, and we've sent it over to the insurance carrier for an attorney to be assigned in representation. Also, I have a copy of it, I'm sorting it out right now, also emails that I need to give out to the Commission.
Madam Vice Mayor, the city manager is 100% incorrect, there was no injunction issued by Circuit Court. I was in fact in Circuit Court with the judge this afternoon at 3:00, and he confirmed that there was no such injunction. I'm afraid the mayor previously misinformed both the Commission and the residents of Pahokee that the Circuit Court of Palm Beach County had issued an injunction, that is in fact not truthful. And in fact, at the end of last night's workshop, the mayor confirmed to me that he knew that it was not truthful.
I have a hearing which was denied.
If I may, I don't think the mayor ever said that there had been an injunction, but there had been papers filed for an injunction, and at the-
By the time the court received the documentation, what was filed upon had already taken place, so the court filed for the 22nd of this month for something that took place, actually the 23rd, which was the illegal meeting. I am still sitting as the city attorney, the court did not make any determination today during the hearing, and I fully intend to sit as the city attorney tonight in that there has been no legal meeting which would prevent me from doing so. The mayor is on the line, this is a workshop, it would be improper for you to make any kind of a motion and vote during the workshop period. And maybe Mr. Brandon Bird forgot, perhaps, but this is a workshop, you all cannot take any votes, take any action for saying. So I would just ask that you wait until the appropriate time as your attorney. I think there are a number of different violations that the state attorney's office is looking at, that the inspector general's office is looking at, that the Commissional Ethics is looking at, that other entities are looking at in terms of the actions of this board, and I would ask that you not add to any of those things while you try to take action 10 minutes after 6:00 before the official meeting of the City Commission starts. The mayor is on his way, Commissioner Mervin-
I will allow her to talk the entire time.
Commissioner Mervin is walking in, and she has, you can see that she's having some difficulty, it looks like.
Go ahead.
She is walking in, I do believe that-
So that's fine, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're gonna go ahead and start the workshop, if the mayor's on the phone and Commissioner Mervin is here, we have a vote for him.
Mayor, the Vice Mayor, Boland, has said that she will start the workshop, I'm not sure if she's expecting you to start, or if she's going to start the workshop. Are you calling the meeting to order, or are you very close?
I'm about, maybe two minutes away, it's raining really hard, we're outside, I should be there about two minutes.
Would you like to, would you like to call the meeting to order in order for the preliminary things to take place before you arrive?
Yes, I'll go ahead and proceed with starting the workshop. As mayor, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor, yes, invocation and pledge of allegiance, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
As mayor of Pahokee, I call this workshop to order at 6:06 PM. They would please stand for the invocation provided by Commissioner Mervin, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Father God, in the name of Jesus God, we want to thank you tonight, God, for another day, the day, God, that you have made, God, and we shall rejoice and be glad in this day. Father God, as we come together today, God, to do the business of our city, Father God, I ask you, God, that you will be with us, rest upon us, oh God, and guide us with wisdom and understanding and respect. And Father God, give your name the praise, the honor, and the glory, in Jesus' name, amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Well. That'd be I, one moment.
That would be the interim city manager, and he is preparing himself to do that, Mr. Mayor.
Present on the phone.
Vice Mayor.
Present.
Boland. Commissioner Gonzalez.
Present.
Commissioner Mervin.
Present.
Commissioner Perez.
Present.
Interim city manager, present. City Attorney.
Present.
Your actual city attorney is present.
Your city attorney is present, Bernadette Norris Weeks.
Thank you both. And then Acting City Clerk is myself.
Thank you, Acting City Clerk, thank you staff, thank you Commissioners, and thank each of you all for being here to participate in our workshop today. At this time, I turn this portion over to our city interim city manager to lead us into the discussion of our topic, which is our agenda.
What we have today coming up on the regular agenda, Commissioners, is resolution of the City Commission for setting our mileage rate and our rollback rate. Also is the for old business, former city manager complaint, American Rescue Act, the cancellation of September 14th, 2021, City Commission meeting, to have it rescheduled for Wednesday, September 15th. And I didn't receive the photos of who was picked for the mayor's gold nail and hammer, so we may have to move that to August 10th. But when we get to the mileage rate, it is set here, and it'll be read by the city attorney into the record, and it'll be staff's recommendation to approve it, with the first hearing needing to be set for September 15th, 2021, at 6:00 PM, and the second hearing set for, to be set for September 28th, 2021, at 6:00 PM, at this location.
Excuse me, city manager.
Yes ma'am.
On the Resolution 2021-16, could you give us a brief explanation for those, I know we have two new Commissioners, and this might be their first time doing it, how we come to the computation of the rollback rate, what a rollback rate is, and please.
So, under our, Palm Beach County sets the, through a series of information we give them, and that the appraiser office accumulates on the values of our property for single-family dwellings, and for commercial dwellings. With that, they'll set the price, or the avalorium rate, as a percentage, so it happens to be the same as last year, which is 6.54. Then there's a rollback rate that's calculated that says we can't go back to no further than 6.09. So, what we're, I have to bring the backup that shows you how a trim is calculated, it's a pack about like this. So traditionally, it's been calculated for us through the county, through their body of work and our avaloriums over time. For example, when a person goes and pays their property taxes, there's two parts to your property taxes. There's the city of Pahokee's rate, which is going to be 6.54, and then there's going to be a rate, which is going to be the county's, which gives a total of a combined amount that your taxes are assessed on the value that a property appraiser went out and valued your property at. So that, and then based on that, they, there's a formula that gets us to where, I told you guys yesterday, we're gonna, we can stand, we will receive up to like $618,000 in revenues based on assessed values. Our values only improved by 1% from last year's value, but it's calculated through Palm Beach County.
Thank you. Waiting on the mayor.
He's proceeding with the topic of this day's meeting, if you would just continue, this is a workshop, and-
Well, the only, the only resolution on here is the trim, and Vice Mayor asked me to explain, and I just did that while you were coming in the door. The other items on here is the old business regarding the former city manager complaint, and then the American Rescue Plan Act, which is attached here for you guys' review of how, what we can use the money for, and the guidelines for the anticipated $2 to $3 million monies we will be receiving from the state through the Emergency Act.
Commissioner, are there any questions concerning the topics that we'll be discussing tonight? Here and now, moving-
I have a question, I want to know what happened to 1902, 2019 or 2002, what happened to that?
So-
We're supposed to have a second reading.
So Ms. Warner, when we have an ordinance, when you have the second reading, we're supposed to give 10-day notice in a publication in the newspaper. I caught the error, and I said we need to notify them, so it'll be brought back on the August 10th agenda, but it wasn't properly noticed, so it was an error on staff.
So here we made another error, which is gonna push it back another hearing.
But she sent out an email a couple days ago on that.
Yeah, I just wanted to get it out.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Any additional questions pertaining to the agenda? Here and now, now and now, moving to the discussion, comments, and concerns of our City Commission, if they have any, I'll start with Commissioner Gonzalez.
Nothing.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Bowden.
No.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Perez.
Um.
Commissioner Mervin.
Not at this time, ma'am.
At this time, having all business before us taking care during our workshop on the topics of our agenda this afternoon, I will adjourn this workshop, and we will reconvene for our regular commission meeting at 6:30 sharp.
You know, I'm not gonna be sitting here all day with all you three going on. I mean, she goes on, you go on, let's get with it.
She's the city attorney.
Let's get with it. We have a new city attorney.
And this meeting has not been called to order, so no motions would be appropriate at this time. And the mayor is the person under the city's charter and code that calls the meeting to order. It is the mayor who does that.
This meeting, this meeting.
Please make a motion to override the city.
Mr. Brandon Bird, you out of order, sir.
I made a motion to override the city mayor.
A second.
The meeting is not even starting. How can you motion?
Call for a vote.
The meeting, the meeting has not been properly called to order. The mayor is waiting to try to get a record established.
I'm not gonna call the meeting to order till we can get.
Commissioner Gonzalez, how do you, how do you vote?
The self, the self-declared city attorney.
I just wanna alert you all tonight. I'm gonna ask folks to leave this meeting if they disrupt the proceeding. And it won't be tolerated. We're not gonna be asking two or three times. We're gonna ask you once. If you disrupt it, we're gonna ask you to leave. View it on the internet. The meeting is now up. We do have internet service. We will be starting. In the future, a meeting don't have to start exactly at six, as close as possible. And if you have any type of technical problem, it's okay to wait. I don't know what we're hiding from. This is a Sunshine State. And we want it to be open and available to all of our residents to participate.
Okay, so let's get it rocking and rolling.
And disruption will hold also to city commissioners who continue to disrupt our proceeding.
I don't think you had the power.
I call this meeting of the City of Pahokee to order at 6:33 PM. May we please stand for the invocation provided by Commissioner Mervin and followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Father God, we need your help. Help us, God, in this city today. Help us, oh God, to look upon ourselves, to search ourselves, and to do what is right for our citizens of this community. Father God, we pray, God, for your guidance. We pray, God, that you will lead and direct us, oh God. Help us, oh God, we pray. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
To fly in the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, madam, mister clerk.
Mayor Bab.
Present.
Vice Mayor Bowlin.
Present.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Present.
Commissioner Mervin.
Present.
Commissioner Perez.
Present.
Interim city manager, present. City attorney.
Present.
Interim or acting clerk. Present.
Thank you, mister clerk, and also acting city manager. Thank you commissioners, thank you staff, and thank each of our public for being here to participate in our regular scheduled meeting of Tuesday, July 27, 2021. Before we proceed on, we just wanna do a little housekeeping. We're gonna ask folks to keep your noise down to a minimum. Please do not talk out of order. Please be recognized by the chair, and that would also go for our city commission. And at this time, I would again ask attorney Brandon Bird if he would step into the audience. And my reason for this, you was appointed by this city commission three in a what I would call a legal, illegal meeting. The meeting was not publicly advertised as according to our code of ordinance. There was no clerk, no recording, other than a Facebook post by a resident. That would not qualify for a publicly recorded meeting. You are not the city man, the city attorney at this time until that is established. That meeting, as a chair, as a mayor, I don't feel that was a legal meeting. That's no more than if the three of them went to the backyard of their home and called for a meeting and say they want a motion for this or that. I just don't feel it is appropriate. And if someone need to file any type of grievance, that's their prerogative. But I would ask you, as a mayor of this city, that if you would step in the audience and participate that way.
And the answer is no. And the reason for that answer is that I'm afraid you've been given bad legal advice all along. And let me tell you why. There is an attorney general opinion, it is dated April 23, 2003, regarding a city that has the exact same language in the charter that you have. And that city charter provided, "The same language shall be called by the clerk upon written request, the mayor, city manager, or three members of the council." The charter provision makes city council meetings open to the public and requires that notice of such meetings be given to the public. Thus, it would appear that the charter provision satisfies the requirement of the government in the Sunshine law. The Sunshine law does not address who may call meetings. Rather, this is left to the discretion of local governments. I, meaning the attorney general of the state of Florida, see no violation of the government and the Sunshine law in the calling of a special meeting of the council by three members of that body. The three members must however be mindful not to discuss substantive issues. And that is exactly what happened.
They discussed substantive issue. They discussed the appointment of a new city attorney. They didn't provide public notice, which in our charter, which is in our record, require a minimum of 12 hours.
Mayor, you know they did. You saw the notice.
Mister mayor, Mister mayor, you are correct. There was no notice that went out. There was no public notice. There was nothing. The facts are distinguishable in what Mr. Brandon Bird is reading from the case here. It is clear over a fast and rapid period of time, three city commissioners, and in fact, one of them, a request came in one minute from the other. So it may, it appears as though those people were together when the requests came in. And then when the last request came in, the last day, from a third person, Commissioner Bowlin, that request for a special meeting was, did not satisfy the 12-hour notice requirement, which would have started then. What the council is reading, and not the council for the city, but what Mr. Brandon Bird is reading, is something whereby it is an advisory opinion. The advisory opinions from the attorney general's office are advisory, and they're dependent upon facts. They're highly dependent upon facts. And as somebody who's worked for the civil litigation section of the attorney general's office, I can tell you that those are advisory opinions. So, Mister Mayor, as it stands right now, I think that you are correct. That was an illegal meeting that took place on last Friday during, at 2 o'clock in the middle of the day when residents didn't have the opportunity to attend. There is a body of law which deals with having meetings at odd times like that, where residents and the public don't have an opportunity to attend. I believe that this directly applies to that. It wasn't in chambers. It was outside of the doors of the, of the city commission chambers. Nobody knew about it but them. And it's placed on Facebook and claimed to be the official meeting minutes, which is, you know, unbelievable that an attorney would make that representation, an attorney that represents local government. So it's not me that's giving bad law. It is the gentleman sitting to my left. I would ask that the, the mayor continue to see if Mr. Brandon Bird will step aside because he is not representative of this body, which has to abide by proper Sunshine law in, in the government of Florida.
Mister Mayor, as you're aware, you were on a Zoom meeting this afternoon with the circuit judge that has control of this case. The same argument was made by your city attorney to that judge, almost identical. And he rejected it.
That's not true. Again, that's not true. Even residents are sitting in the audience, heard it.
That put that responsibility squarely on this city mayor as the legal spokesperson for this city.
No, ma'am.
I would not try to override or overturn a majority commission vote, but it wasn't a valid vote. It wasn't a valid meeting. Again, I would tell you, if they went outside and got together and decided that they wanted to do whatever they wanted to do, and they took a vote, it would be a illegal vote.
Mister Mayor, as you just recognized, the city commission can override you on any decision such as this. And I would suggest that they do that now, and we can proceed with the city business.
Mister Mayor, I make a motion that we reconfirm the appointment of Mr. Brandon Bird as the city interim city attorney.
This is not, this is not the meeting to do that. You have.
I second the motion.
That must be placed on the agenda. It must be placed on our agenda. There's a lot of folks out there, if they knew.
Mister Mayor, the next item on the agenda is additions to the agenda.
That is for the, that is, that is for the manager. That is for the manager. That is not for the city commissioners, which, by the way, the ordinance that you cited, maybe you didn't see future agenda items in the ordinance, but there is a requirement for city commissioners to place items on the agenda as future agenda items and be voted upon by the commission.
Yeah, that's nonsense. Well, just proceed tonight.
I know that, I know that you think the law is nonsense. The law of this city and the law of this state is nonsense, but it's not.
At this time, our meeting is being interrupted. I'm gonna ask the city attorney, the city attorney in waiting allegedly, to remove himself from that table.
We have a motion and a second.
So he won't be disrupting this proceeding. He's allowed to sit out in the audience, like the regular general public.
I think you have a motion on the floor.
That motion is not valid.
And a second.
And there's a second. There needs to be a call for that vote.
Motion not valid.
Unbelievable.
I'm gonna have to ask you all, I asked Mr. Brandon Bird to sit in the audience. I'm gonna have to ask you all to have him escorted out of this chamber.
Officers, as you can see, the mayor's about to be outvoted on this matter, and his own ordinance provides that they can do that.
Mister Brandon Bird is operating for his self-interest, and it is deplorable that, that an officer of the court would sit here and try to delay these, this meeting for his own benefit and give, continue to give bad advice, continue to give bad advice as someone who is not the recognized city attorney.
We need Ms. McKins to escort it too. He's using profanity. He's read in the front of the audience and he's disrupting this meeting.
Please vote on the motion that's on the floor.
The motion is out of order. We're not gonna discuss or vote on anything that's not part of the agenda. That's part of our rules of order.
Mister Mayor, you know the rules, and the rules is that the majority of the commission can override you.
We have, we have new rules of order in this commission.
Yes, we do, and you need to abide by them too.
You obviously don't know the rules.
I do.
Mister Brandon Bird, I respectfully ask you to leave the chamber based on your continuous disruption of this meeting. That's respectfully. I respect you.
No.
Law enforcement officers, I'm the mayor of this city, and we have an individual that is disrupting our proceeding.
If you could please vote on the motion, that would end this discussion.
You got my vote.
Okay, I say yes.
Law enforcement, I don't know who's ever in command. We have a gentleman here today that is disrupting the proceeding. I extend that we are.
Mister Mayor, we've already terminated her. We did that in a meeting. We terminated her.
With the 90 days.
Just to appoint him as an intern.
I would agree. I would agree. You did terminate her.
Then why, why the big deal?
She has a contract that calls for a 90-day.
She can stop.
Not if we don't want it. We don't want it.
You have to do it properly. You have to do it in a meeting that's all you did.
We did it. We did it. Yes, we did it.
We terminated her.
Please just vote on the motion.
I, I do not understand why we make a motion and we get a second and you won't call for a vote.
Now, just adjourn the meeting.
Ms. Bruce, you are interrupting this meeting. I'm asking that you leave this chamber. To walk up in front of this commission like that.
We have people here. We have people on the internet, sir. We have a motion on the floor. We have a second. How can you ignore us?
It's not a proper motion. The motion that we vote on in this chamber should be part of the agenda. We are deceiving our residents when we come up here and vote on issues that's not even a part of the agenda. That's why we posted agenda. So anyone out there would know what we're gonna discuss and know what we're gonna vote on and decide from there whether they're gonna attend or not.
We need one more vote.
I already said yes. I already said yes.
Okay, motion passes.
No, the mayor has determined.
I hope you don't get disbarred because you really interrupting this meeting, attorney.
Yeah.
This is inappropriate and unethical for you to do that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, let's proceed with the meeting.
Next item on the agenda is the additions and deletions.
Mister, sir, you are out of, you are out of order. Mister Brandon Bird, you are out of order.
Officers, can you please escort the ex-city attorney out? She's disrupting the meeting.
That would be Mister Brandon Bird.
You're speaking out of order, Commissioner Perez. You're disrupting the meeting. You need to be escorted out.
Next item on the agenda is a.
Go ahead. Escort me out. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Mister Mayor, why don't we just move this meeting ahead?
How can the meeting be moved and we got all this interruption here, including the commission?
Why are you fighting this? Why are you fighting this process?
It's my responsibility, it's my responsibility as a presiding officer to make sure that we conduct our business in an orderly manner. And we haven't been doing that.
We're trying. We're trying.
Commissioners, 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 commissioners.
Mayor.
I, I have one item that's important to all of Pahokee on this agenda. Before we get out of hand, if we all will, I need resolution 2021 passed so we set our millish rate.
I make a motion that we pass resolution.
But I, I'm just saying, it, it seems like it's gonna take a minute.
The next item on the agenda is additions and deletions, whether the mayor recognizes his own agenda or not.
I adjourn this meeting for the disruption of this chamber.
The mayor cannot adjourn a meeting without an affirmative vote on the rest of the amendments.
If, if a meeting is unruly, the mayor can't adjourn the meeting.
All right, everyone stay in place. We'll just move forward with the meeting without the mayor.
You are very entitled, I tell you.
Mister Mayor, come on. Let's get the business of this city done.
Mayor Bab, no.
Why are you doing this? Come on.
You're like a gnat in my ear.
We got a lot of business to take care of. Let's just get on with it.
You just insulted her. You're the mayor.
Mayor Bab, if I can say, let's, if we could go and do the military.
What was that?
You have no idea what you're doing.
I don't have no idea what I'm doing?
No, you don't.
Well, we're about to see what we're doing right now, aren't we?
Let's.
We're gonna see what we're gonna do, right? What?
We're trying to do the business of the city.
Commissioners, we, we really need to have the millish rate. I have to send it off tomorrow. Please, if you will, please.
Next item on the agenda is additions and deletions. I would suggest that you add onto the agenda.
It's been agreed that, it's been agreed that you all would like to.
The termination of the former city attorney and asking her to remove herself.
Mister Brandon Bird, you, you are out of order, sir. Even if you was an attorney representing this city, you would be out of order.
I would like to make a motion to add to the agenda the removal of the old city attorney.
The other city, the other city commissioners have said, all city commissioners have said that they would like the resolution read.
You are out of order, Commissioner Perez.
I, I'm prepared to move the, to read the resolution, Mister Mayor, if you.
You may read it, attorney.
Resolution, resolution 2021-16.
I am the chairperson of the city of Pahokee, city commission. I'm allowing her, as I said, attorney to read that.
Mayor, you're out of order, sir. You just got outvoted. She's been fired. She's not your city attorney anymore. You need to recognize that and move on with the business of the city.
Mister Brandon Bird, you should really stop right now.
I'm not gonna stop.
All, all of the commissioners have said that they want the resolution read so that the. All of the commissioners have said that they want the resolution read, so that the...
No, the commission said they wanted to follow the agenda. And when they get to it, they will have a...
You're out of order, sir.
Which is me.
Wherever you live, you coming all the way over to Pahokee to disrupt a meeting. And that's a shame.
You should be embarrassed.
City manager.
You should be embarrassed.
I'm not embarrassed.
I'm giving the city manager the floor. The letter that was sent to this attorney dated on Friday, what date did that give her as her final termination date? I realize this commission voted to terminate her. However, she had a 90-day clause in her contract. We got folks up here even thinking about not even paying her for the 90 days, even if they fired her, which would be a violation of her contract.
We have never said that.
All these commissioners here is wanting to...
He said it. He said it.
Mr. Mayor, I did say that.
He said it to me yesterday.
You need to tell your commissioners that, though, because they evidently don't know.
If you'd let me.
I would like for them to even tell me, what is your salary? What is your, where is your contract?
I'd be happy to tell you that, too.
Have you been sworn in?
Yes, sir.
Have you been sworn in as the city...
City attorneys never sworn in, sir.
Let me just say this.
You didn't read your own charter.
Mr. Mayor, the city manager has said that he needs the one item to be read.
I gave our city manager the floor, so he can at least share the date, official date of her letter.
Mayor, everyone's seen that letter. Why are you asking that?
Why are you interrupting this meeting?
Mayor Bapp, I would ask that we will adjourn this meeting. The milice rate could be...
Law enforcement, I'm humbly asking you all, as servants of the law, as a direction and request of the mayor of this city, who's the governor-leader of this city, who's the sports person of this city, to escort Mr. Brandenburg out of this building. I understand your rationale. You say there's a court pending decision, but this is an official meeting, and I never had an official request to escort someone who was disrupting. Now, if you determine yourself, this is not a disruption, then that's fine. But I consider this a major disruption of us conducting our business.
Okay, Mayor, so the sheriff's department just heard the rest of the city commission override you, and you refuse to acknowledge that. So under the terms that you just said, you're the one disrupting this city.
No, actually, no. No, actually, the mayor is the person who's presiding over the meeting with the authority to make the request, which is in the ordinance that obviously you haven't read, to be able to make the request, to have someone who's disruptive removed from the meeting. That is in the ordinance. And so I don't know why the sheriff's department, who is paid by the city to, and there are several officers here, probably up to maybe seven, and nobody is escorting Mr. Brandenburg out, who is clearly being disruptive. But it has been a request made. It is part of the ordinance that the mayor can make such a request if someone is being disruptive, and that should happen at this time.
Okay, Mayor, as the ex-city attorney knows, because she wrote this ordinance, Rule 2 says, "The presiding officer, you, mayor, shall decide all questions for order or procedure, not in conflict with this decision."
I would ask that Mr. Brandenburg is out of order.
His ruling may be appealed to the city commission upon the motion of any city commissioner, and the decision shall be final.
This also deals with...
You're not the city attorney at this point.
This issue deals with disruption. That's what we're talking about.
City manager, could you at least read the letter? So this...
I didn't bring that item. Hold on a second.
So the item said, everyone knows what the item said, Mayor.
This issue deals with disruption. And as a separate part of that, as a separate part of that...
Her last day would be in October.
It talks about disruption, and the mayor being able to have someone escorted out in the event of disruption. That's what we were talking about. We weren't talking about anything else other than disruption.
The sheriff's department removed...
No, the sheriff's department has to remove you. You're the ex-city attorney.
And then if you don't follow the rules that you adopted as mayor, you may be removed as well.
Yeah, well, you're the ex-city attorney.
You're clearly out of order.
This is ridiculous.
You're making this whole process a democracy.
You are.
It is a democracy.
And this is what you'll be looking at again. The chaos will be coming back.
Excuse me, attorneys, please. We all agree that there is a pending injunction.
There's not.
We agree it's a pending...
Lawsuit. That's all it is.
So the court said...
So I need to move forward...
Yes, I agree.
With, I need to move forward with city business.
Yes, you do.
You should.
Now, if the city doesn't pass this milice rate and get approval tonight, the people of Pahokee suffer.
That needs to happen.
And they're going to remember these two discussions from you two.
And I am happy to read it into the record.
I'm not the mayor.
City manager.
You're out of order, sir.
City manager, that's exactly right.
At this time...
I am happy to read it into the, I am happy to read it into the record right now.
Here, let me ask this question. City Commission, may we move to the resolution part and get at least this milice passed so I can have it signed? I'm asking for a majority vote.
I want to follow the agenda.
Okay, you're one vote.
I move we move to the resolution dealing with...
Mayor can't make a motion, you know that.
I'm polling. I'm asking.
Let's get this attorney straight. As a mayor, I can make a motion. I can second a motion, and I can vote.
Not in this lifetime, you can't.
Sometime you can't.
Never.
What those sometimes are?
Those sometimes are when you pass a gavel.
Mr. Mayor, I'd ask that you not worry about debating with Mr. Brandenburg, who is the self-proclaimed city attorney. I would ask that you not do that, Mayor. And I believe, Mr. Mayor, given the enormity of the issue and the consequences of not having this ordinance passed, as has been suggested by the manager, that you allow me to read it into the record. And then you can go back to bickering. But I think that you should allow me to read that into the record. I'm confident that, I'm confident we'd be able to defend it. And I believe that if any city commissioner sits up here and not votes on that, you all, the residents, ought to consider that when they go to the ballot box. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared to read.
You may proceed to read the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 2021-16. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, setting the proposed milice rate for fiscal year 2021-2022, pursuant to Section 200.065 Florida statute, together with the role black weight, establishing the date, time, and place of public hearing to consider the proposed milice date.
I'm making a motion to override the mayor and go on to addition and deletion.
2021-2022.
I have never sought...
Providing for directions to the city clerk, providing for an effective date. I have read that resolution into the minutes. And this body should consider...
When have a city attorney...
The next item on the agenda is...
The item has been read into the minutes.
The next item on the agenda is additions and deletions.
The item has been read into the minutes.
Law enforcement, I have never ever... And I respect all of you all.
It's about seven of you all here.
Unbelievable that you all would allow the city to suffer like this.
I have never been so disrespected to not be able to remove and disrupt the person on the floor.
Yes, I make a motion to dismiss the city attorney immediately.
No, you need to add that to the agenda first.
Actually, it would be...
A motion to add to the agenda.
Okay, then I make a motion to add to the agenda.
Of the city attorney immediately.
Dismissal of the city attorney immediately.
Let them talk. It's being recorded. If the governor don't remove these three and probably disbar the city attorney, I don't know what could happen. So allow them to disrupt this proceeding.
Second.
Is there a second to the motion?
It's no different from what happened in Washington.
All in favor of that motion, say aye.
This is great, you are not the mayor. You are not the mayor. That is not...
You're not a presiding officer of this commission. In this commission, I mean, this would happen when you got new peoples up here don't have a faint idea of what they're doing.
Mayor, you've been here for 20 years, and it's clear you don't have the faintest idea of what you're doing.
Evidently, I've had support to be up here for 20 years. Your information is 27. Duncan Paget, the first mayor, served the 25.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the motion that you added to the agenda.
Lieutenant.
To dismiss the city attorney and ask her to leave the room immediately.
He's trying to correct the...
Is there a motion to that?
He's trying to correct the sunshine law violation.
I make a motion that we dismiss the former city attorney immediately.
Violation that was made, but you can't correct that. You can't correct that.
All in favor of that motion, say aye.
And you are not the presiding officer. You are not, you are not the presiding officer. There's no, no, I would not be moving.
Gentleman, gentlelady to leave the room.
I would not be moving anywhere. This was an improper motion. It has to be a future agenda item.
Mr. Brandenburg, I've known you for a lot of years, and you're making this proceeding look like a circus.
This is what it would look like again. This is what he did before. This is what, this is, welcome back. This is what it would look like. Welcome to the City of Pahokee with Brandenburg.
This meeting is adjourned.
If he were the city attorney.
He's going to adjourn under the mayor's power.
The mayor doesn't have the, no, he does not.
Goodbye, Mr. Brandenburg.
He does not have the authority. It has to be by vote of the majority. Sir, it has to be by vote of the majority. Please stay in your seats.
Go and create new sunshine violations, Mr. Brandenburg.
Yeah. Yeah. Please, everyone in here, please.